And the public anger, if you will, that will perhaps change people's minds.
Hi Denise and hi Kathy.
Are you at the township hall Bill?
Yes, I am. I've got the room all to myself. But I think I'm here by myself, but I. It's like the only board member we're missing is Larry. It's not like Larry to be late. I'm just gonna just walk over and see or Bob just check over there. Just make sure. Thank you.
Bill, are you able to, you know, allow the township, you know, people who work in the township hall to work remotely for the most part? Or that?
Right now, we've got it pretty much. There's somebody stationed in every department. And we've basically are open. Bob can probably tell me a little bit better than I can because I'm not down here every day. But yeah, we're we are open to the public. We try to minimize any type of meetings and any type of social gatherings here. But Bobby, you have anything else to add?
Yeah, sorry. I came in a little late. I don't know who asked the question, but yeah.
Wes was just asking how we're handling our work, our staff.
Generally speaking, we we push about between 90 and 95% of the staff on a normal basis. We have the unique circumstance. Generally speaking, where somebody may be working remote remotely. But the expectation is that the staff are in the office because of the health department order and indicates that government offices clearly can be open. That's one of their frequently asked questions. So we're doing our best to serve the public, sustaining all, you know, PBE and everything else that we have here. Propagating things. And we have face guards or the counter screen installed. So we put quite an investment in protecting both the staff and the public. So it seems to be working well.
Good, thanks.
Welcome Larry.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting in order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Have a quick call the roll.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here, Bill Fountain is here and I am in Heartland Township.
Treasure Horning?
Treasure Horning is here and I'm in Heartland Township.
Trustee Jermaine?
Trustee Jermaine present here in Heartland Township.
Trustee McMullin?
Present and I'm in Heartland, Michigan.
Trustee O'Connell?
Present in Heartland, Michigan.
Trustee Petrucci?
Trustee Petrucci is here and I'm in Heartland, Michigan.
And Clerk Chofu here from Heartland Township.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our agenda. Entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Petrucci, second by treasure warning, any discussion? And I think you'll do this again. If you raise your hand, that means yes. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Call to the public, welcome Wes Nakaguri, our commissioner for Heartland Tyrone Township. Welcome and Wes would like to have the privacy.
Yeah, thank you very much Supervisor Fountain. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. I want to talk for maybe three, four, or five minutes about how the state of Michigan is allocating vaccines to the various counties, maybe three counties. What's troubling and let me just take us back and say, I posted a lot of information on my county commission website. It's called commissionerwest.com. That's commissionerwest.com. So everything that I'm going to review today, I'll give it an overview, but if you want the detail, you want all the noted material. You want to see all the exhibits, it's out there. There's, I want people to have access to the same information I had. So they want to challenge results, they go by analysis, the information is there. But what's really troubling is the methodology that the state of Michigan has chosen to allocate vaccines. They're prioritized, they're using an algorithm that prioritizes, you know, all 83 counties. And the way it's set up right now, Livingston County has had the 83rd priority out of 83 counties. So priority wise, we are dead last. You know, as just as a point of reference, if if the if the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services had elected to say priority based on the number of citizens in a county that are 65 and older, you know, which I think would have been very reasonable. It's been pounded into my head. You know, that the vulnerable population are the senior citizens, you know, 65 and older have a far greater chance of, you know, having more severe problems and even death. But if if the algorithm was just based on, you know, 65 and older, Livingston County would be ranked 80, excuse me, 11th in priority. We would move up from 83rd in priority. The current algorithm takes into account 15, they call it social factors, not medical factors, social factors. It includes things on the more egregious side. You get points if you don't own an automobile. You get points if you happen to live in a mobile home. You get points if you are a single parent household. You get, you get all these things that are have really little to do, or I'd say nothing to do with medical condition are taken into account. And that's basically what's used to prioritize who gets what, which counties get more, which counties get less. In fact, the Detroit News had published an article on Sunday where they had interviewed Mark Hackle. He's the county executive of Macomb County and the county executive of Wayne County. I think it's Warren Evans. I'm not, don't don't quote me on that. But where even in Wayne County, the basically the suburbs are getting shorted and the city is getting more. And I just, it's troubling. I think that the more people that know about how these decisions are made, you know, the weighting of these factors. In fact, let me, let me hit one more point and that's an important one. The in the algorithm, you know, in these 15 factors, there is one actor in there that's, you know, the number of citizens in a county that are 65 and old. I mean, so they do take that into account. The unfortunate part is that's weighted at just six and a quarter percent. So there's 93, almost 94 more percentage points that are weighted with other things. And, you know, this is a frame of reference to the, you know, if you're a minority and if you speak English less well, you know, those two things add up to 25%. So that's four times more important to the state of Michigan than if you're 65 or older. I just think their priorities and how things are weighted are not what they need to be. I'm not saying that minority status shouldn't be in there because there is some evidence that it should, but it shouldn't be weighted as much as it is. It really needs to be weighted on the number of senior citizens and, you know, their underlying conditions. It needs to be medically based, not socially based. And I would encourage everybody to, you know, take a look at what I've posted on my website. If you have questions on, on, you know, how I came up with the, and anything with my analysis, I'd be happy to chat. And I know I'm encroaching on my time limit at Call the Public. But so I'll end it there. And if there, if there, I don't know if you do question and answer to Call the Public, but if you do, I'll take questions. If not, you can get with me later.
We typically don't, Wes, but if any board members have any questions for Wes, feel free, raise your hand and and go and ask them anything they may have. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, Wes, a question that I have is that when the county gets the allocation from the state, do they then have to divide that allocation among, let's say, hospitals within the county? Or do the hospitals get a separate allocation from the state? Is it all included or is it as a separate?
It's actually a little bit of both. I don't know the exact breakdown of, you know, what gets sent to the hospital directly? What gets sent to county health department? I do, I don't know. I'll tap my head. County health is provided. I know last week, for example, as just an example, we were scheduled at the beginning of the week to have 1,100 doses. Late in the week, the state of Michigan reduced that to 900 doses. It's the reasoning why they make these last minute changes. And this last week wasn't the only time this has happened. It's a little mysterious. Plus, it is hard to plan your resources when you're not really sure exactly what you're going to get. That's been a problem for the for the county health department. I will also add in there that eventually we will get to a point where, you know, the private sector, for example, the three Meyer pharmacies in Livingston County, the Meyer store. I'm pretty sure all of the T's have been dotted, the T's crossed for the agreements, you know, to allow or to include Meyer in the distribution. That would be a big plus, you know. I'm told that their capacity on a per day basis, each store could do 1,000. Citizens could vaccinate 1,000 citizens. So that's, you know, just with the Meyer store, that's 3,000, you know. I don't know if I, I don't think I fully answered your question, but maybe the best information I have.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question? Well, Wes, thank you so much for taking the lead on this. I've been listening to the local paper and HMIsman on top of it, but thank you for seeing this important element. And I would think that those folks that are isolated from their loved ones in a senior center or something similar to that should be the, maybe, maybe hopefully we've gotten those folks taken care of. So they can at least see their loved ones again, face to face.
Supervisor Fountain, can I ask one more question?
You certainly can.
Wes, is there anything that's counted boards throughout the county to help you guys?
I, you know, actually, I'm glad you asked that question because it allows me to mention some. On Thursday, we've called a special meeting, 5:30. It's on Zoom. The link should be up on the county homepage, but it's a meeting of our Health and Human Services Committee. We are voting on a resolution that would call on the governor to change, you know, to medically based. You know, medical factors, not social factors. I'd encourage, you know, anybody on this meeting to join us, put a little bit more public pressure on them. You know, spread it, spread the information to your friends. I would also encourage you to look at the wording of our resolution. If that is agreeable to the, you know, the trustees, you know, the Heartland trust, the Heartland Board that maybe pass your own resolution, you know, that supports it. This is, this is an issue that affects the whole county and it's, it's troubling. We have a, we have a waiting list, you know, on the county website, there's a form called vaccine interest form. And the last I knew it had like 32 or 35,000 people that are interested in the vaccine that they can't get it. And it's, it's, you know, we need to take care of those that are vulnerable. And the best science that I've seen says it's the senior citizens. In fact, I would share with you that, you know, people versus the average population, if you looked at somebody 65 and 70, they're 90 times more likely to have death or problems. If you go up to, I think it's 80, in the mid 80s, it's like 600 times the likelihood of death or major problems. So the data clearly is there. It's the senior population and that's not the, not any other issues, not any other underlying other factors. But, you know, it's, it's seniors that are by far the way the biggest factor and it's easy to support them. And so anyway, I'd encourage people with their resolution and maybe use that as a case.
Go ahead, Matt.
Wes, I have one quick question. Is, do you know how Livingston County compares to our surrounding neighborhoods?
In terms of the priority ranking?
Yes.
No, I did do that analysis and I just took that Livingston County. I don't have, you know, specific numbers on our surrounding communities. I, I have been told that, you know, Oshana is, doesn't fare well. Because one of the things that really hurts Livingston, a couple of things that really hurt Livingston County. One is we are very high, if not number one in per capita income. We are very low in the number of minorities. Those things hurt us quite a bit.
Well, again, on behalf of our board, Wes, thank you so much for the information. And we will have a discussion about this most likely at our next meeting. And we'll probably put a, we'll see what you guys have to offer. And we will probably follow, follow your lead and do whatever we can to assist.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much. Thanks very much for all the time. I appreciate it. I know I went over and I'm greatly appreciated. I, I am going to depart the meeting because I've got another one to go to, but I wish you all the best. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
Anybody else this evening that calls to the public? It doesn't look like it. Sorry about that. We'll move to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll support you.
I have a motion by Clerk Chofu, second by trustee Petrucci. Any discussion? Be none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number seven. We have three items this evening. The first one is a resolution for the Heartland Emergency Support Operations Plan. And I'm going to turn this over to Manager Wes.
Thank you Supervisor Fountain. What we have this evening is a resolution to renew and adopt a four-year emergency support operation plan. This is Heartland Township's specific plan. It was originally completed in 2012, except this entire late February of, or late this month. And once approved, it'll be good for another four years. The intensive support emergency plan was requested from all municipalities within Livingston County. It's to basically coordinate efforts in that kind of emergency with Livingston County. This township support emergency operating plan is actually a supplemental for Livingston County emergency operations. So they require municipalities to complete this document and submit it to them. It all goes into their collective emergency operation plan. This is required in order for the county to be eligible for funding in the event of a declared disaster. So with that being said, I went over briefly, there was an independent email sent out with a little bit more detail, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions anybody may have regarding that.
Bob and I spoke about this briefly today and we're going to meet with Adam Carroll. And just so we're real clear, you know, basically they are the go-to person. But some of the language speaks to if there's some type of an anomaly that triggers a township-wide emergency. I just want to have a better flavor of what that looks like if there was some type of bad anomaly. It'd be something like a big tornado or something catastrophic. And it states that the township, that language states that the township supervisor declares that. I'm not going to declare anything without having some instruction from a higher above law enforcement or Adam to what that would look like. So Bob and I are going to discuss that. And Larry Chofu is also on that call list, the three of us. I know you don't know anything about this, but I thought it would behoove us at least to have a better idea before if something happened. Having the expectation that somebody else is taking care of everything. Even though we don't have any resources, I think we would be involved from perhaps a media perspective or information perspective through our internet or channel 20 or that type of thing. So Bob, I think concurred with that and Brad, you're good with that?
Yeah, absolutely. This plan here is simply what we'll commit to Livingston County. What we'll do is a kind of subsequent internal document that we'll kind of reference on our own terms. Have all our internal contacts laid out and what the process would be in the event that the supervisor has to declare some nature of that, who we notify, who we get collective buy-in from at the county level. The sheriff, state police, all that. So yes, we do plan on doing a supplemental document that is not required and will be for our own internal.
Yeah, we'll have that posted somewhere so staff and all of us would have access to it just in case there was something that happened or if somebody was gone or something like that, to that effect. But is there any questions for Bob on this? If there aren't any, I would entertain a motion for the resolution.
I'll move to adopt the resolution to adopt the 2021 Heartland Township Emergency Support Operations Plan.
I'm sure somebody else would be me. Chofu had the motion and Trustee O'Connell had the support. There's no other discussion. Have the clerk please. Go ahead, Larry.
Okay. Clerk Chofu is a yes. Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci? That was a yes. Trustee McMullin?
Yes.
And Treasure Horning? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number seven B this evening is redacting a resolution. When the millage passed, there were actually two millages that are active. We have to rescind one of them, which was the one that was of the lower of the two. And this resolution rescinds that. So we would be exercising the one that was approved in the election last fall. Is that correct, Bob?
Yeah, just a quick briefing on that. We actually put the fire millage renewal out one year early. So we could plan accordingly to events. Didn't put, it was successful, which in turn means we still have one year left on the whole millage. What we put out in the voters in the voter language is that we would only collect on new millage. Will they take the prior millage one year early and will implement and do one. So that's basically what we're doing here is we do have quite some time before we'll actually collect on that. It's September, or we get it out of the way early.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions? Be none, I will entertain a motion for this resolution in a second.
I move to adopt the fire millage resolution resetting the 2012 fire millage into the fire millage approved in November 2020.
Got a motion by trustee Jermaine and a second by treasure warning. I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee McMullin?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci? That was a yes. Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Treasure Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Clerk Chofu, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. And item number three is another resolution. It's to waive the 2020 sewer surcharge fees. And Bob, I'm going to have you explain this. We talked about this. We thought this was going to be a really positive thing for us to do this season with the, with the all of the different things that are happening with especially business. And so Bob, you want to give a brief explanation? Well, then we'll ask for any questions and that's a rule.
Absolutely. Thank you, Supervisor Fountain. The township utility surcharge program involves one or sewer fee. Basically, when a business, I could back up, this only applies to businesses, does not affect any of the residents. But if a business purchases capacity in a water system and they exceed that capacity, there's a nominal fee that is turned to them for every day that they activate capacity. Those fees are tallied. Once a year, they are in the mix for a total of those fees. And then what the township in turn does is takes that, the funding that they pay in and immediately purchases the specific business. And then what the township in turn does is takes that, the funding that they pay in, and immediately purchases the specific business additional capacity in the water and sewer. Now, the businesses that are actually efficient in capacity very seldom come full through this one year of surcharges. We have some businesses that it will be anywhere from eight to 12 years before they come full because of such large deficiencies. Essentially, what I'm proposing is to waive those fees through this resolution for the 2020 data collector. So we collected all the water use for the year, calendar year 2020. We are now getting ready to compile that data and send out these invoices. Now, the waiving of this particular fee would simply defer the amount of time, be it anywhere from five years, eight years, 12 years, whatever is outlined for our business by one year. It had zero effect on our water and sewer funds. This does not affect the residents whatsoever. Really, there is zero impact. Other than that, business will not gain additional capacity this year. In turn, I think it's a way to promote being business-friendly in this particular climate we're in due to the coronavirus. And I, I'm just proud to be able to present this to this board. So that's in a nutshell. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions regarding our surcharge fees and/or the process.
Any questions for Bob?
Yeah, will we calculate the surcharge amounts so that they would know how much they're benefiting? Or would we just not bother with the exercise?
Generally speaking, we have a key five to 10 businesses that we would basically notify them and say, let us know if you want to know the calculation, we will process that for you. However, if you do it for every business, it might be somewhat time-consuming. But there are, we, we do have a couple of businesses that we probably reach out to personally and let them know if you wanted to know your surcharge. The hard part is the surcharge data will most likely be skewed because out of 365 days, some of these businesses were perhaps only open six months, maybe five months. But so we would have data for those particular months. But yes, we will do that upon request.
Bob, I have a minor question, I believe. If you look at page 72 of our agenda packet, under the recommended action reference to resolution number 20, would that really be a 21 for the calendar year?
It would be 21, whatever revenue number that is. I apologize.
Yeah, this will be resolution 21R04.
Thank you.
I will move, I will move to adopt resolution 21R04 outlining waiving of the 2020 water and sewer surcharge fees based upon eight effects during the 2020 calendar year.
Support. I had a motion by Treasure Horning and a second by clerk Chofu. Any discussion? Be none, I have the clerk call the roll.
Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci? That was a yes. Clerk Chofu is a yes. Treasure Horning?
Yes.
Trustee McMullin?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next says item number eight, which is board reports. We start this evening with trustee Germaine. Nothing. I'm a trustee Germaine. Trustee McMullin?
No report.
Thank you. Trustee O'Connell?
No report.
Thank you. Trustee Petrucci? Nothing. Thank you very much. Clerk Chofu?
No report.
And Treasure Horning?
Um, we are in the process of losing our cash here after eleven years for a moving on to get a full-time job with benefits, which we didn't have in, in our availability. So we put out a, a call list, a resume, and we got in 14 resumes. And we have two good candidates. And Bob, Donna, and I are in the process of interviewing those.
Thank you. Just briefly, at the chamber board meeting this morning, there was discussion, and we've spoke about this for well over a year, right before COVID. We wanted to meet with, on behalf of the township, Bob and I will be meeting every quarter with the Chamber of Commerce, with different business folks and some developers, just to talk about, you know, how we can, you know, areas that we could see if we can improve, be more efficient. So we're excited about that. The chamber's excited about it. And our first meeting is in May. I think it might be the 14th. So we will, I will keep the board abreast as to that. It's informal. There's nothing formal at all about it, other than we just want to understand a better where the climate, things that we can improve on as businesses within our community. So we're excited about that. And again, that was being led by Katie Chuba in the Chamber of Commerce Board. So more to, more to come on that. If there's nothing else at board reports this evening, I will move on to. There's our brief recess, by the way. Managers' report, please.
Thank you Supervisor Fountain. Just a couple of quick updates. The water system expansion project is out on the street. For bid is on the state of Michigan's website and bid system. We have bids due on February 25th. We'll have a bid opening at 10:00 a.m. Getting a lot of, a lot of feedback. So a lot of parties looking at that, which is good. It means it'll be a competitive, very competitive. So additionally, this year, obviously, we'll be evaluating our water and sewer rates. We have begun to gather data on that and conducting an analysis and working with the Livingston County Drain Commission on that project. I just want to remind all the board members that we will continue to offer, or I should say promote, training opportunities. You will see that on a monthly basis. If you see or have a desire for any training that's not listed, please reach out. We will accommodate and get you registered for anything that you see fit. And just another quick note, as you can imagine, Dr. Zender, our workshop with him has been rescheduled again. And I'm just getting to the point where I may not tell you when it is until we can, your health department orders actually change because this has been a moving target of, of the year so far. So stay tuned. I do have a call with Dr. Bender to kind of set some, some dates. But the more and more this occurs and more and more communities get backed up, so don't hold your breath. And then we have this evening, we'll be discussing again, a general fund overview one more time. I'm going to present the CIP with some recommendations. And then the next board meeting, we will have Fire Chief Adam Carroll join us to give us the fire fund overview. And then we will be discussing my recommendations for the mayor pool. So stay tuned for those. And if you have any questions in the interim, please don't hesitate to reach out. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Bob. Our next item is to review. Again, this evening, we're not going to be officially acting on the, any budgets, but we're going to be going through the general fund. And I'm going to turn again this over to Bob. And feel free, as we go through each one, if you have questions, please ask. And if I could figure out how to see everybody on the top screen, so I could, maybe just, since I can't see everybody this evening on this screen, just unmute yourself and say, hey, Bob, I have a question. That'd be the best way to do it. So thank you. Bob?
All right. If you guys can hear me okay, I'll begin. I tried to clean this up a little bit more. So it's easier to read, I guess, on Excel. What you have here is our general fund. Up at the top here, we have the historical and projected activity for the remainder of the year. The last two columns are the manager recommended budget, which is working with staff. And basically what we see for the, the year that we're going to adopt next month, and then the subsequent following year. They are not approving the second year. We approve the budget at the, for the March 16th meeting, we will be approving only this column here. I just want to be clear, we put this in for reference. You're not approving that. It's just to kind of give you projection. So what we have here, this is our estimated revenue. Okay. Current real property tax at the top, you can see that trending upward. We don't have any chargeback. Mobile home fees would be for any of the mobile home parks that we have in the township. Those are fees that are set by the state, which we get a reimbursement for, shows up as revenue. Going down the line here, state shared revenue, obviously, it's, it's better than what was projected, say, eight months ago. So we didn't nearly lose what we originally had anticipated. This is a good story, the spot right here. Growing down, property tax administration, that is 1% of the tax bill that we collect for admin fees. School collection fees. If you remember the last meeting that we had, there was on the consent agreement, an agreement to collect this. This is the fee we charge, we get from the school taxes for actually administering their collection. Cable franchise fees. If you remember, this is actually a much bigger number, but there's a subset of this that goes into the Public Education and Government Fund. What you see here, the 221,000 is the unrestricted cap, meaning it does not have specific allocations that it has to be extended on. So zoning fees, professional review costs, these are developer-based. Basically, when we collect these funds, they'll cover staff fees. And they also cover if we have to have an engineer review a site plan or something of that nature. So while it's revenue, it is offset by the expense and down at the appropriation. So Calumbarium sales, see, we, we kind of give an estimate. We never know what we're going to sell there. Same thing with the lot sales. These are for our cemeteries. And then just kind of going down the list, you see all our different fees and interest earnings. The cell tower lease for the AT&amp;T power, cable studio rent. This is kind of a unique revenue because the 577 fund, which is our communication, actually rents a portion of our back cable studio. It's, it's really taking out of one fund and getting it into another for revenue. That covers basically a portion of the heat, the electric bill, and square footage. Special event donations. This is for our winter fest. As you can see, we didn't have it last year, so we didn't collect any money on that. That's all basically donations. And then you see the reimbursement for water and sewer. That is the portion of staff allocation that's the time to base time dealing with water or, and/or sewer. All that collectively, you can see compared to years prior, we're actually in really good shape given the circumstances of the slight drop in state shared revenue. Again, it's not nearly the story we had eight months ago. We are in much better shape, and I'm happy to report. Things look very good on the revenue side of things. Any questions before we dive into the expenses? I kind of briefed over that fairly quick. And I apologize, I can only see a certain subset of you. So please speak up. Going down in the
So, Bob, I do have a, I just have a question on that real quick. So if we were to follow the amended budget 2021, your total revenue coming in last year was the $2,773. And then this next coming year, it's 2731. So most of that revenue that's less from last year is the state share revenue? Would that be a correct statement?
That is primarily correct. You can see the state shared revenue up here. Going from this figure here to that figure there, roughly. I mean, we have a couple of other anomalies, but that primarily, it's kind of offset because we have an increase in tax revenue. And the tax revenue will continue to go up. So we do expect the state shared revenue to not necessarily decline anymore. We kind of think it'll stay static, not necessarily increase either, but we don't foresee any decreases in it at this point in time. But that is a correct statement. All right, moving on appropriations, which is our expenses. Basically, this is all the different departments that we have at the top here. You can see slight increases. These are nominal. Some are minor inflation increases. The other increases that are associated with this, these columns here, would basically be if we had any changes with personnel. And I'll give you an instance, that when we leave Cory, if we bring someone on at a different rate. Now Cory was a part-time employee, but we had some changes in full-time employees. And the difference in somebody opting out of benefits and perhaps opting into benefits is enough to fluctuate that. So that is primarily what makes up the difference in these numbers. Is the staff and benefit changes. A family is much different than, say, a couple or a single person opting into benefits. So with the recent staff changes we had, these, these account for kind of the anomalies. And then you see kind of static inflation from this year to this year. Vehicle use, that's pretty much minor. Covers repairs and maintenance of our vehicles. We're very blessed in that the majority of our vehicles are very new. Relatively speaking, our oil changes, car washes, fuel for them and whatnot is relatively inexpensive or nominal expenses. So border reviews, treasures, treasures is the same way. Now, I should add, there, this figure right here, I believe, was misquoted in your board packet. I'll own that. I'm not sure how it was misquoted. I believe it was 143. It was a typo. I have corrected it on this one that you're seeing right now through the sharing. So data processing is our software. Towns upon grounds is basically everything contracted services, repairs and maintenance. It covers all our day-to-day operations for the towns upon grounds, including the mowing, includes snow removal, electric bill, heat bill, water bill. And then all the different expenses that we have here for the planning and zoning. Sorry, I stepped on a few things here. And then Department of Public Works, very similar here. We did have a change with, again, the employment status. And the employment change actually reflected in benefits costs. So that's primarily what you see there. Sidewalks, that we have an agreement with the Heartland Schools to do the sidewalk in front of the Zero Center. And then we usually budget a small application for some salt and needed plowing, for plowing as needed. Street license, this is the cost with the street license. You can see it's actually gone down. This is before we did the LED conversion. And you can see our cost afterwards. So that was a huge benefit. The return on investment in that will be approximately three, three and a half years. So that'll definitely pay dividends down the road. One of the biggest changes you're going to see in the expenses is we had a significant increase in our cemetery maintenance for mowing. What we've decided to do was basically take the in-house service from our M59 medium for mowing, put that into the cemetery, and we're going to contract out the road. And the one thing we learned that were the in-house staff can certainly mow fine. It became a more of a landscaping issue and properly mowed it and whatnot. And it actually turned out to be Uh, it became a, more of a landscaping issue and properly mow it and whatnot. And it actually turned out to be cheaper if we put our in-house staff into the cemetery and then simply contract out the M fifty-nine median. So that, you'll see an increase in the median cost, but it's actually reflected down here in cemetery. This would have been a much more significant cost had we not done that. So, and this is kind of an anomaly. You may look back on cemeteries here and say, why are there no figures here? Uh, kind of planning for the chart of accounts, which is a, a state standard that we're gonna have to adopt in the near future. Uh, they do not, they do not want your cemetery being in a separate account. Uh, it can be a, a general ledger line item or an account within your general fund, but the cemetery used to be in its own separate fund. So we're trying to be ahead of the curve. We switched it into our, uh, general fund this year. So this is the first year for it. That's why you see it here historically. Um, had we contracted all this out, I believe the figures would have been closer to fifty thousand dollars. So bringing the in-house staff in is definitely gonna save us significant money. Yes, it is offset by the difference here, not nearly as much. We will still save money. So, and then communications is, uh, we have a separate department for that, which is the communications director. This covers all, all our expenses for, uh, basically getting our communications in. And then, uh, zoning code enforcement. Um, and parks and recreation, uh, parks and recreation would basically be, um, our, our contract that we have with HIA and our recreation partners, it includes all the mowing, the maintenance at, at the parks. Even though they're done in-house, there's a cost allocation that we assign to those. So this funds all the maintenance of our parks. Um, so I would, you know, I'm very pleased that this number is still relatively low or low. I'm not sure. Uh, we have a very unique model in that, uh, working with our recreation partners that works well, uh, and has proven not successful in other cases. So I'm very happy that this is. So, and then you have your appropriations that transfers out. Uh, this is the funding from our general fund, uh, that we transferred over into our four oh one. The next item we're gonna review is our capital project plan or capital improvement plan. This will see, you'll see the revenue coming in through a transfer. It is directly proportional to this figure here. So just want to let you guys know where these come from right now. Um, ultimately, uh, this used to average about four hundred and fifty or four hundred, between four hundred and twenty and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we have been exceeding, um, kind of where we were with that. Um, and, uh, that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. These years here are a little bit different because you can see we're still taking in the same revenue. Down here at the bottom, we put in a placeholder, this will most likely be closer to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We recognize that towards the end of the year. Uh, I don't want to call it a balance or a surplus or anything like that. Uh, it's basically the funding that we have not spent out of the general fund. We transfer that over. So all that carries down here, you'll see the net revenue and appropriations. Uh, we have our beginning fund balance listed here, and then our end fund balance down here. So even transferring, uh, these large sums, our goal right here is to have one year of operating expenses in our ending fund balance, which equates right now to about two point seven million. Obviously, you can see, uh, we are seeing that slightly. Uh, we, we do have a, you did actually approve the transfer this evening in the consent agenda, so that will transfer this funding over. Um, and we're still in good shape. Uh, so any questions on that? I kind of reviewed that quickly. I wanted to give you a brief overview without, uh, diving into too much detail. Quite frankly, I reviewed a lot of this in depth with you guys, so I, I apologize if I went over it a little bit too quickly. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, with regards to the roads and M fifty-nine medium fund that you went over?
Yes.
It's a hundred and twelve thousand, which would, it's more like a hundred and thirty or forty thousand if you add the twenty back into it, but is there something that we can do with that median that may cost us a little bit more money upfront, but down the road, the maintenance would be a lot cheaper than this hundred and twelve thousand dollars we're spending? Is, is, is this, is this something that we should look at? Uh, it just seems to me, I mean, I mean, we want the curb appeal, I understand that, but, um, it just seems to me it's starting to get a little bit on the expensive side here.
And, and Joe, you bring up a very valid point. I'll dive into a little bit more detail here. This also covers all the roads in the township, so this also includes our, um, our road chloride on the gravel roads, which we do three applications out of the general fund. The fourth application is out of the road milling. So I don't want you to think a hundred and twelve thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars is strictly going to the median. Um, I believe our contract for maintenance, like the mowing and landscape, is between twenty and twenty-five thousand, if memory serves me correctly. Because that's irrigated, we also have a water bill on that. Um, and we don't have our used, uh, or capacity in the water system because we don't have a partial idea of science that. So we actually pay a small surcharge, just like one of our commercial businesses would. So I guess I should have clarified that more. This, M fifty-nine median is included in this fund, but it also includes, um, our road chloride, and our road chloride accounts for, uh, probably close to seventy percent of that cost.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I apologize. Thank you for asking that question. To your point though, yes, it is something I'm continually looking at because I look at those mediums and I see how many times cars go off and damage them. And, you know, part of me goes, boy, if it was stamped concrete, that'd be a lot easier to maintain. But then you talk to the city of Brighton and ask them how their stamped concrete worked out. And, uh, you know, frozen tons to it, I guess, you know, and you come to other communities, seeing what works, what doesn't. Uh, it is always an active kind of research to go, what can we do differently about that?
So, Joe, um, like mowing that median as such is twenty grand, and then for the water and irrigation, uh, it's about seventy-five hundred dollars. So it's about twenty-seven thousand.
Okay.
And to be fair, we, we generally have two or three major unexpected repairs, which, uh, usually due to a car going off of it. Um, unfortunately, when a car goes onto the median and causes damage, uh, they do the irrigation. Uh, we have had our water meter and backhoe preventer totally wiped out. Um, the cars are gone. They're usually drivable and there's no police report. We just see the tire tracks and sign down the next day, something of that nature. So it's kind of unfortunate, but we bear the thought for that.
So, Bob, I had a, I had a quick question.
Sure.
If you go down, uh, to the bottom of, uh, where you've got your amended budget with five hundred and twenty thousand one sixty-six, it's, it's, uh, net of revenues appropriations. Right at the bottom, right there. I noticed that you, you kept forty-four thousand dollars in nine oh one. Well, can you just explain? Um, do you always have, do we always have a certain balance in nine oh one?
You know, I'm, I'm gonna check with Susan on that. I'm actually questioning that if that was a typo, because I believe that was intended to be like, uh, four hundred and forty thousand, which would put it more on target for what we usually transfer. Um, I apologize. I don't have that answer, but I will follow in on that.
Bob, I had thought that forty-four thousand was just the two twenty-two thousand dollar payments.
It's hero and senior center.
Right.
I take that back. So that'll be your hero payment and the senior center payment, which were both increased ten percent, so from forty to forty-four thousand. Those are included in there.
Yep.
Yeah, if there was a way to rename nine oh one to that effect, we'd make it a left. Understand. I don't know if this-
No, it's that.
Well, in the, in, in the five eighty number, that forty-four thousand's also baked into that.
Yes, it is.
And, and again, I think if you go further back into the thing, you'd pick up to twenty-five thousand of the cemeteries also.
Mm-hmm. But Bill, I think, I think that's a chart of accounts name. I don't think we can change that name. I think it comes from the state part of a count.
Okay, that's not a problem. It's, I know it's in the detail work. It's just, uh, when I was just trying to figure out, where, where did that number come from?
Yeah.
But, but thank you for that update. Uh, Bob, if you could, uh, maybe minimize the screen, then I can see anybody if they have a question. If you have a question, feel free to raise your hand and ask Bob.
Again, I know we put the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget out there for, just for discussion purposes, but in the unallocated cost center, we have twenty thousand budgeted for merited in, merit increases for twenty-one, twenty-two, and it jumps to forty thousand in twenty-two, twenty-three. Is, is it, am I, am I missing something or was there?
So basically, if you approve the twenty thousand, that's a legacy now. So the following, you would have the twenty thousand plus an additional twenty thousand.
Okay, okay, understandable.
Subsequently, I mean, if we were to go five years, you'd see that obviously ramp up, but that's the same, it's a placeholder on top of a placeholder. You're gonna give somebody a raise, they're gonna automatically get that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on general fund? If not, we can, uh, did you want to go through the CIP briefly tonight?
If you could, real quick, I, I got a clean sheet here. I'll, they're up on the board here. All right, can you see that okay?
And, and Bob, we're just gonna review this tonight. We're not gonna pick and choose. That's gonna have to be a session. This, this will take some time and effort and discussion. Um, correct? You're just putting, this is just the beginning, starting.
Yeah, and basically this is, I should, this, CIP is living documents. You were to, even if you were to approve it, each project, you have to come back to the township board for approval. Um, I just want, we've never had a single document with all the different funds in it, so that was my goal here. I just want to kind of brush through it quickly, let you know kind of what's planned. Um, and, you know, we'll, um, we'll also go through the cash flow model. So I'll brush these briefly. Um, when we see the completed, uh, this one up here should actually say completed now, but when it was developed, it was proposed. Um, the numbers in bold are actually actual numbers. Those are project costs that we have incurred. So we often try to put in, um, uh, placeholder or estimate, project estimates. That's numbers that are not forward. So, um, I'll kind of go through this. As far as pathways, uh, we completed engineering for the pathway, um, that we had talked about, which was actually originally scheduled to M fifty-nine south, west border quadrant. Um, that project was actually on the books for, uh, last year. It was ready to go. We kind of put a pin in it because of COVID. Now, this would be the one unique project that would, uh, urge the board to, uh, make a decision on, because if we want to be forward with this project this year, we're going to have to put it out on the street sooner than later. Right now, I'm already hearing from contractors, even if we put this out on the street, we may be a late July, early August construction. If we wait much longer, this may be, even if we wanted it done here, it may not happen. The contractors have a lot of pent-up work from the COVID situation. But that would be the only project I would, uh, recommend, at least putting it out on the street to see what the bids would come back at. Uh, this, this is the engineer's estimate. Um, but we'll move on. Just keep that kind of in the back few and go to review it. I'll bring that up again. This is the, the number you'll run.
Uh, Bob, I, I have a question on that.
Sure.
And this is page one oh four. If you go to page one oh five, which is obviously the next page, what's the difference between you've got heartland sidewalks and the connectors? There's two, two different sets of numbers, uh, both of those. It's kind of-
I gotta look up here, hold on.
So if you go to the second page, the numbers at the top of it don't match up to the numbers that are, you know, but it looks like the same, the same school of work, except the numbers are different.
One oh five, right here? Uh, I have to look into that, because I know one of them was adjusted for inflation. There was a slight inflation, so I will do that.
The, the numbers, the, the total of the two numbers are both, are the same on both schedules though, Bill. Almost looks like one of the schedules has thirty-nine thousand in twenty twenty-one, where the other one had thirty-four thousand. I think it was just dragged out of twenty-one, twenty-two into twenty twenty-one.
And yes, I take that back. You could be correct, because we have to reference it by when the project was actually completed, not when the bill was paid. This is a unique circumstance, the capital improvement fund. So it was probably originally constructed, or, uh, the bill came in, it was inadvertently put in the wrong year. It, it goes by when the project actually took place.
So one oh five is the more accurate number?
Yeah.
Page one oh five, I meant.
Yeah.
I, I'm just, I know I must be a little slow tonight, uh, so just bear with me just for a second. What, why do we have two different scopes of work of pathways, grounds, parks, and miscellaneous projects on two different pages?
So one of them, this is summary. If you look down here at the bottom, this is the summary. If I zoom out, you'll see that this is every fund that the township will, is responsible for. I put them all in one sheet, so you have a reference point. If we go to just the general fund, this, I tried to separate them by project. They all are flagged out of the same fund. And basically, you'll see, uh, the beginning capital project fund, project total, other revenue, and then the transfer, that is what comes from the general fund that we spoke about, and then the ending capital fund project, which are four oh one project costs. So, um, usually you see it in one sheet. It's not divided by category. It's just all on one list. I tried to clean up and make it a little bit more presentable. That was the thing. Uh, so I'll skip the summary and we'll just jump into general fund here. Um, on the towns upon grounds, we had, uh, improvement, hero center painting. Uh, this is kind of an anomaly here. You'll see eighty-five hundred dollars scheduled every year. Basically, our HVAC units on the rooftop of township hall have reached the end of their useful life span. Our HVAC technician says they are still in good shape. He does not recommend replacing them, uh, but they could go at any time. Uh, so what we've done for the past three years was historically, we budget eighty-five hundred dollars. In the event that one goes, um, it's not necessarily a surprise. So we did have one go, uh, about three years ago, which was a catalyst for this. Um, so far, they are still plugging along though. So that's what, why this is in here. We could, I, I budgeted one HVAC unit a year. In essence, we could have three of them go in one year. Uh, I'll be back in for our board, obviously, for any of them, because it wouldn't require additional board approval. But I just wanted to let you know, that's why you see this kind of as a continuation. Uh, township hall parking lot rehabilitation, we're all aware of the curb issues that we have. Um, I have that scheduled for next year. We can get accurate pricing. This number was about two years old, but it does have inflation built into it. Uh, and we need to get another contractor, or another couple contractors out to provide a revised scope because it's two years old. But that is, that is gonna need to be addressed in the near future. I have it adjusted or recommended for next year. Uh, moving down into parks, uh, this year, you won't find this in your board packet. It's got omitted for some reason. I have forty-eight thousand dollars for seller's park pathway seal coating. Now, we have been crack sealing it. Uh, it is going on, uh, I believe, almost seven years old, seven and a half years old. Uh, it is due- I believe almost seven years old, seven and a half years old. It is due for a full steel coat. Now, this is on the high side because I have built in there's one section that might need a slight patch. It's right around the bend as you start to as you come north from Meyer and you get all the way to the northernmost corner and start to head to the east, there is a very large crack there that needs to be addressed. But this is a fairly conservative number. And then last year, we actually had the Sellers Park Plant Management scheduled, and we were going to move forward with that. I'm actually proposing bumping that one year because I think we need to revisit that. There's been significant changes by the mountain bike group where they are actually clear cutting significant vegetation and they're actually maintaining it. So what I want to do is also get a reevaluation of the Pratt and Mities. Have the gentleman who scoped that work come back out to Springer Field and kind of give us a you can see how it reacted to the cutting and give us a more scoped project cost. So again, that's these are all going to be work session discussion items, one by one. I'm not asking for all of these right now. Just want to kind of let you know what to do. Under miscellaneous projects, generally speaking, we put a $20,000 contingency on an annual basis. What this is is basically for any surprises that may come up. It gives us a little wiggle room for our capital improvement projects or something that's an anomaly that was not planned. As you can see, the streetlight conversions, here's what the cost was to us when we did that. Bullard Road was an SAV where the residents came to us and said, will you finance our road project? We did that, but rather than bond for that, we funded that out of our capital project fund. So in essence, there there was an expense and it's offset by the revenue. So we do get revenue from that and they are paying us back. But that does show up as a more or less as a debt, if you will. We did see that in the other governmental fund. Last year, obviously, we had to purchase a new truck because of the deer incident. That was a truck to the state bid. I have in here, I bumped the gateway signs. I think we need to revisit the cost estimate on that and revisit the design parameters. I'm just not convinced we can pull that together all this year. It is possible if that is the desire of the board. But I believe that we could design it and cost scope it this year and potentially look for installation in spring of next year, if that's the desire of the board. The N 59 median improvements. Prior to COVID, we had an N 59 median committee that was meeting for proposed improvements along the N 59 medians. And it kind of had a pin stuck in it. We were planning on bringing something to the board. So I've kind of bumped that out. I hope this year that we can reconvene. Possibly we'll have something proposal by the end of this year. Most likely, this would be a spring of 2022 project. And then we also have election commitment projected in the year 2027. That's just a placeholder. This last column is project down the road. We don't know exactly what year. We just want to let know they're coming up sometime that we know about. So this is just more or less a placeholder. We just want to take it or one. We know the year. It's 2027. And Larry will keep us appalled of whether those numbers are accurate throughout the year and or if there's any changes in the requirements. All that being said, again, this is just our general fund, what would come out of our 401 fund. Project balance, you can see up here. Even if we do every project as planned, at the cost, on schedule. You can see our end balance still continues to relatively climb. So we definitely have some money to do not only these projects that are on this list, but also discuss other capital projects as well. So that's the general fund. I ran through it fairly quick, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions before we jump over into the fire fund. Any questions on that?
Just real quickly, Bob, on the annual capital fund transfer projections. The 513 is ties out to the numbers in the budget, the 450 that you're projecting for 21 22. Does that equate to the 5 520 surplus that's in the budget?
Yeah, yeah. So it's actually going to be, we use 450 as always a placeholder until we actually make the transfer. So after tonight, since we transferred, this number would be updated. I could technically update it right now.
Okay.
I'll jump into a fire fund if there's no other questions. Fire fund's a little unique in that the fire, we Heartland Township owns two of the three fire stations that are currently used by the Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority. Now, what we do is we pay the fire authority quarterly payment. Above and beyond those payments, we are responsible for the building. Now, they do have their own internal capital improvement plan, but it's generally for the operations of the the fire authority, not necessarily a facility. So what you see here would be cost above and beyond our quarterly payment. Again, these items are certainly open for discussion and will be on a work section. But you can see we replaced the roof on Fire Station 61. That was actual cost. What we're looking for this year is Station 62 interior light project. Station 61 has a drainage issue on the exterior of the building that causes flooding. Station 62 needs seal coating. If we do that at the same time as the pathway, we could probably get a significant cost discount. Station 61 has a carbon replacement. And tornado sirens, tornado sirens, we budget $20,000 every other year. That goes towards the installation of a new tornado siren. There is a set desired number of them strategically throughout the township that the fire department monitors and strategically places. I don't have that list in front of me. I apologize. And I don't, I believe we have four left to go that would be desired. So being that it's every other year, I believe it would be eight more years till those are installed. So and then we certainly we have an HVAC unit at Station 62 and Station 62 replacement group. We don't know necessarily what years these are coming. We just know they're going to be in the near future. This one realistically, we know is every other year. So we just kind of put those in this category as we know they're coming at some time. So little bit of an anomaly here. You'll see the beginning cash balance for the fire fund. This is the township's fire fund. Now, this may be a little deceiving because we have to make our quarterly payments out of this as well. So while the fund balance is somewhat, I would say I'm not pleased with the way this reads, but we're following generally accepted accounting practices. But we have about $1.2 million in payments that we make to the fire authority throughout the year. So we always want to make sure in this we have a balance of approximately 1.2 million. So we're going to break this down. You can see the project cost here. The expenses, that's why the these are the expenses without the capital project. And then the annual taxes and revenues designated. Ultimately, we come up with a fund balance, but it does include we collect all the funding for the fire authority at the end of the year. But then we have to basically hold that money to ensure we can make our quarterly payments. My recommendation on this is we'll continue to monitor and make sure that the taxes are being paid for and taken care of, but and that people are paying them on time. But we may wait to do some of these projects potentially till we've made at least our third quarterly payment to ensure that we have enough and don't overextend ourselves. To be fair, these are fairly low budget projects. Even these combined only adds to $6,000. But our fire fund, generally speaking, although the fund balance looks fairly large. We do operate kind of as a lean manufacturing, if you will. As the money comes in, we immediately pay our quarterly payments through that. So hope that makes sense. I kind of went through that fairly quick. There's nothing here that I see that as alarming. There's no nothing out of alignment in these things. Even if the fire authority were to walk away from the fire station, if it was resolved, Heartland Township still owns these buildings and we do have to perform maintenance on them. So I think these are, I would recommend these improvements. So any questions on that? Or answer that one fairly quick. But I do want to talk to you when Adam presents his budget next at the next meeting, he does have a capital improvement fund. That's generally for the fire operations. It is not necessarily, it doesn't include a facility, if you will, because that belongs to Heartland Township. Moving on to the road fund, this is our road millage fund. You can see the projects that we've done here in the bowl. We had an anomaly last year where Road Commission came to us and said, hey, you want to work on some tree removal with us? It's pelvis and sidewalks and you can start something else. As I mentioned before, in the road fund, we are on our general fund, we fund three applications of road quarry. Our road millage included a fourth application. So that's what you see here when you say, why is that 21,000 every year? For the duration of the road millage, we called out that we would put a fourth application in late fall of road quarry to our gravel roads. That fourth application is funded strictly from the road millage. If the road millage were to go away and not be renewed, we would discontinue the fourth application. At least without further discussion. You'll see this transfer. This is for our water main extension. This is the funding that we're going to for County Road when we redo that after the water main gets installed. We are recommending Hacker Road get crack sealed this year. And then we also have these three projects, which were going to be spaced out, but there is substantial cost savings if we do them all this year through the road commission. When we did the original gravel roads, it was planned to do what's called a limestone path around year seven or eight. The limestone path basically is about another three to four inches on top of the current limestone that's there. It breaks down over time. Long story short, this was planned. It was part of our millage funding or our safer roads plan. And we just had a significant cost savings in all the road projects. Kudos to Livingston County Road Commission for working with us. And you can kind of see our fund balance throughout the year. Right now, our last year, the road millage is this this final column. And if everything stays as is, we're still projected to have this guy of $3 million. This will year 2024 will be the last year of collecting on the road millage. With this fund balance, we do have a couple options. One is we could potentially renew the millage. If they wanted to renew it. If we have this balance and it was approved, we could carry over. And the millage may not have to be as much as it was for the first road millage. This balance would transfer over just like the fire millage did when we renewed that early. The other option is we could potentially find more projects or a large project to use this money for. It does have to be allocated and outlined with the voter approved millage language, which is for road improvements, both gravel and pavement. Those are kind of the options we have on the table. But if we do, basically, at this point in time, we're projected to have a significant cash balance from our road millage. We knew that was coming. I'll be honest, I didn't think it was going to be that high. But the projects continue, the projects we do on the county roads, they continue to help us out and give us better deals on them when they are their roads. So if this equates to anything, for those of you that aren't aware, this original project was approximately $9 million in total generated revenue. The fact that we have nearly $3 million will have balance. We were probably in the quarter of $0.67 on the dollars that we paid for our road project. Of course, I think that's pretty significant though. So any questions on the road fund?
Yes, this is Matt. Do you think it would be wise to have the a new committee established to look at options for another road millage renewal similar to what we did eight years ago?
I do. And unfortunately, I believe the COVID situation, until I can host a public meeting, I'm kind of at a standstill with reconvening that team. But I do believe it's something that potentially would be later on this year, we reconvene. And I think, quite frankly, that would be a different approach. Just have the road passports, the new road passports decide what you want to do. If you don't feel that another millage renewal would be supported by the residents, what do you see fit for the funding that we have left over? We can definitely, I've already began to collect Paser ratings. I already have recommendations from the road commission. So I think we're to the point of possibly facilitating those meetings. I'm just kind of have my hands tied by the health personnel right now.
And if I ask a second question, Bob, is in the past, the township has been pretty regular to issue questionnaires, there's probably a better word for it, to the public gauge their sentiment on many different subjects and topics. Is that something we intend to do and could could we ask some questions about roads if in fact that was in the works?
The answer is yes. That is definitely something we can do. And yes, I would recommend that. You know, I believe that one of the key components of road passports is they're going to, we need to provide them with some sort of metrics of here's the resident survey or questionnaire responses, take those into consideration. You know, I think the the tax, that will, you know, what what this is on the like residents when they see a tax bill. Yeah, I'm not convinced the climate right now would would approve a similar millage at 1.5 mils, which is what this was. Not saying they wouldn't renew it, but perhaps at one mill or say 0.8 mils, I think it may prove successful. The the problem is when we if we were to redo it, one of the things we're going to have to narrow down is we kind of pick the low hanging fruit for roads to be done. Now we're getting into roads that are more, I don't want to say specialized. They're either roads that are going to eat up a lot of the funding. You know, we have our Clyde Road, we have our Pleasant Valley, our Bergen. Quite frankly, those three roads without any sort of cost sharing would probably eat up a whole $9 million. If we were to renew the, you know, and I'm not convinced the public would be willing to renew the millage for three roads, you know. These are kind of the questions that the task force would weigh on and say, you know, here. What we found before was there's a little bit of sticker shock with road work and, you know, everybody wants the road done. And then they realize the value of a dollar and don't, it's kind of, that's the role of the task force. I would be more than willing to facilitate that and kind of guide them towards recommendations for the board. I just want to caution that the recommendation may be, hey, use up what's left in this one, but we don't recommend moving forward with the millage renewal. That's always, you know, a possibility. Not saying it's the case, but yes, the short answer to your question is yes.
And Bob, with regards to the Hacker Road crack seal. Hacker Road is a county road, and I can recall when we participated in having a pave, we we partnered with the county and with Oceola. So does that money that you have allocated for the crack seal, is that our portion? Or is that, I don't want Heartland Township to be paying for roads we don't have to pay for. I mean, that's a maintenance item and the county should be crack sealing that. But if the county wants to chip in and we chip in and Oceola chip in, I may not have a problem with that.
Yeah, and to be fair, we did fund our last crack sealing. You can see up here, we did Fly, Hidden Reed Road and Bergen Road, and it was 23,000. They did help us considerably with that funding. On this, I if memory serves me correct, it was it was about 70 cents on the dollar. So Road Commission just doesn't have the funding to to maintain these roads. We went into this knowing that. They certainly helped and they do contribute. Hacker Road though would be different. Yes, you're absolutely right. I will be reaching out to Bill Bamber or myself or. I will be reaching out to uh, Bill Bamber or myself or Bill will be reaching out to. Just open that discussion to say, hey, do you want to tip in on this? And we want to do it, but uh, we're, you know, not going to do it without some sort of cost sharing since it is a border road. So yes, you are correct and we will be reaching out to work with our neighbors on that.
Hey Bob, you know, even if you said in going for a $9 million renewal and three roads would eat it up, well, that's not necessarily true. Because we do have budgeted in quite a bit of maintenance on the roads that we've done to keep them in good shape. So I think a road millage benefits everybody in the township, you know, not just three specialized road. I mean Pleasant Valley will take a lot of heat off of old 23 and Hacker because it's another main drag and we're the only portion that's not paved. So you know, I, I don't see that as a specialized road. I see Pleasant Valley as another main thoroughfare. And the same with Clyde Road. I mean, although I don't use it, it goes, we're, we're the only portion between Oakland County and, and. You know, out, out to the highway that's not paved. So I, I think uh, I think we have a good chance to get another millage.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I should, I don't mean to say that I don't think we have a good chance. I, I think before we had 20, 21 projects for $9 million. Uh, it, it's more perception. And yes, I mean, quite frankly, off the bat, um, we are going to have to maintain these roads that we redid. Uh, the county does not have the funding. They will help us with it. But just like we see on the cracks, then we do, we will fund the majority of that without a doubt. Uh, so that's kind of where we're at moving forward. Uh, even if we approve a new millage, there will be a subset that have to go to maintaining the roads we just did. Um, so without a doubt, you're absolutely right. The last one we have is the water fund here. Um, and this one, it has our water extension in it. It has our new well. Uh, this has kind of all our updates going on here. Uh, long story short, we're gonna have money coming in from the developers. Uh, our water fund will drop uh, somewhat because we are contributing $650,000 towards the water extension. That would potentially uh, be offset what you see here. This column uh, would be any future connection. This is without Mayberry. If Mayberry were to connect, now they're not all going to connect in one year, but if they were to connect. Or even Andy Giavennetti's property that he's inquired about. All the uh, tap fees that they would have to buy or the RUs that they would purchase. Those funds will go right into this, this box here. So this is assuming that the 40 acre parcel that Mayberry used to have that Andy Giavennetti owns right now. And the Mayberry properties do not connect. So this is based off of our other developments in the works. So this is a, a very conservative approach, the fact that uh, you know, there's a possibility of. Well, well over $2 million in additional opportunity here when those properties come. Again, the, the catch is they're not out, gonna build these houses overnight. To build a thousand homes, you're probably in the neighborhood of anywhere from eight to 12 years till full build out. So it would be uh, essentially uh, amortized over that. You wouldn't see $2 million come in overnight. Unless somebody were to buy all the RUs at one time, which is highly unlikely. Um, this really paints the picture of where we're at with our uh, uh, capital projects and the water fund. Um, this is not our actual fund balance for the water. That is a totally different fund. Uh, we kind of transfer money into this for our capital project. So uh, just want to let you know, you remember when we did the other governmental funds, there's a significant amount of money in the. Uh, in the water fund in excess of this. This is strictly the capital improvement fund portion of the water fund. And then going back to my summary here, what I did was basically take all that information we went over with and I put it on one sheet. This does not have the cash flow. It just kind of shows you what we're looking to do in each particular uh, fund. So that was a brief overview of the CIP in a nutshell, what you can expect. Again, my recommendation would be, uh, I'm not asking to act on anything other than the N59 South pathway connector. Um, and at this point, uh, I'm looking to just put it out on the streets for bids. It would have to be out for at least a month. Uh, we could certainly have it in a subsequent work session when the bids come in to see how, where we're at with the price. But if we want to get on the schedule for 2021, construction, this project should be out on the street. Uh, probably within the next two or three weeks. So just want to make that known, that is uh, you know, if it pleases the board, we'll move forward with that. At least just putting it out to get bid, uh, otherwise we can certainly wait till a subsequent work session.
So Bob, you're, you would like to have it, that sidewalk go up to bid, so we can see where the number is?
I do, and I, I guess my primary concern is we have, we're already permitted, there's multiple permits that are required for that sidewalk. This was actually planned to go in last year. Uh, those permits have a shelf life. I, they're not outrageously expensive. I want to say between eight and $10,000. But I would hate to refill the permit because we didn't, we didn't want to spend that much. Uh, obviously our fund balance in the general fund capital project can certainly cover that cost. Um, I'm not recommending anything else at this point in time. We can subsequently, at subsequent meetings, we can review capital projects and have work sessions. Um, I just believe that particular project has been vetted and, and quite frankly, we get a lot of inquiries from the public of, hey, what happened to that sidewalk? So this is the one that also connects to Millpoint. I don't know if you remember that we were actually, they gave us the easement. And we're gonna tie it into the Millpoint sidewalk. So this would be the first connector in one of the quadrants. Uh, basically going from Fiddler Grove, which is the edge of San Marino. Uh, it's gonna get to Old 23, you can cross over to Speedway, you can cross to the north to the shops of Walden Woods. We don't have that connector and we, we certainly vetted this in many prior meetings, but that will. I mean, essentially you'd be able to walk all the way to Imagine Theater because you can cross N59 by the south where other, uh, our median sidewalk is. This would be a pretty significant connector for uh, the residential population in the southwest part.
Well, we had, uh, this was, this, this was on our uh, approval list last year, I believe. And then when the COVID hit, we put it on hold. So what, uh, comments from uh, board members? At this point, we're not, we're not approving anything, uh, but uh, get a pulse for everybody on at least getting a bid to see what the project would come in at. Larry Schofield, I'm just, just go around to each individual if that's okay. Larry?
Yeah, I'm good with going forward with the bids on that project.
Okay, uh, Matt Germain?
I'm good as well. Sorry, I was putting a note or log on the fire.
Thank you. Trustee McMullin?
Yeah, I, I, I would, um. Welcome the uh, getting the bids.
Uh, Treasure Hornet?
I agree. I think it's a, let's see how much it would be and see if we can get it done this year.
Thank you. Trustee Patrissi?
I don't have a problem uh, getting the bids. I think that the timing is a little bit off, but. See, uh, as, as the contractors get full next year, their bids aren't quite as. Look at it as they would be if you do it at the, at a better time, but I'm in favor of seeing what, what it would cost.
Thank you. And trustee O'Connell?
I'd be, yeah, I'm willing to go ahead and maybe get the bids and find out what it's gonna, what we're looking at.
Yep, and I agree with that as well. And again, I, I think just getting what that number is going to be gives us a pulse is uh, first. Could be a cue, uh, if we wait too long, it probably would happen this year. And it also give us some time to see how things are starting to uh, unfold. Our economy and we'll be a couple of months into a new presidency and see what everything is with uh, COVID. And at some point, we'll probably be able to hopefully start seeing what some of these short and long-term repercussions might be. You know, community and everything else. So, um, Bob, I think you have your marching orders at this point to go ahead. And um, get those bids out and then we'll just uh, we'll make that decision when they come in and, and with the pulses of. Of the building parts at that point.
No, I thank you for that. And like I say, well, certainly every project uh, that comes in out of the CIP will come before this call. I just want to reiterate that, uh, we will have subsequent work sessions once we get through the budget cycle. So stay tuned. Uh, I don't think there's anything else that is pressing. Uh, obviously the water will continue to move forward. We have developers waiting on that. Uh, outside of the water improvements, uh, everything else will be basically adjuvative. There is nothing that is necessarily pressing. And to be fair, I mean, there, there's some validity in all the points on the pathways. I don't think um, there's risk if we wait, potentially the cost could go up. Um, but also, you know, there's an extreme demand right now, obviously. So I think it's a good idea to find out what the actual uh, costs are coming in at. If, if they're much, if they're higher than the engineer's estimate, I would say wait. Uh, I would say perhaps we, we wait till the demand dies down, maybe we can add a small, we'll form the first project, not one of the last project. But I think it all depends on what they come in. So I appreciate seeing that and move forward.
So Bob, I'm not sure if it was just my uh, audio on that last segment. But it didn't. Even sounds goofy to me right now. So are there any questions for Bob? Doesn't look like there's any additional, any, any additional comments on anything?
I would just like to go back on the, on the CIP plan. Again, we're, you're, you've got a projection of a million dollars sitting in that fund at the end of, even with the sidewalk project in there. I, I would like to go back and start looking at the park again and, and putting in some kind of new facility at the park. Uh, taking one of those smaller projects that was on that original plan and maybe putting in something new. Uh, into the parks again and, and staying on course with the, with that. I mean, we haven't done anything new in the parks for a couple of years now. Uh, and, and with the, and with the fund balance being where it is, I think there's some. Opportunity to, to do a little bit more in the parks. Uh, don't have to get specific on uh, issues, but that's just my thought.
And perhaps all we can do is I am looking for a way to plug Mike Lucian to the Park Site Plan Committee and perhaps that's kind of the kickoff. We'll kind of greet him on the uh, Park Master Plan that we have and kind of what our goals were and. Uh, perhaps we already have kind of recommendations for what's next on there. We have a, quite a few surveys. So maybe we'll reconvene and, and hold a Park Site Plan Committee meeting to kind of say, what are our top five that we want next? And bring those to the, to the board.
And Bob, it's been a long time, uh, and obviously we can't do it right away, but when we had our, our task force. Uh, you know, everybody prioritized what we wanted to do. It'd be interesting to go back and see what that document looks like and what we've accomplished. And maybe have them reconvene as well, because that was good input through a bunch of different organizations and people in the community. And you know, didn't, it wasn't necessarily this board that, that it turned out the way it did. It was with all their input. So I think that was a good process and I think we should uh, really consider doing that again.
Absolutely. And, and probably what's even more relevant is uh, the park task force data we still have. Um, and it'd be nice to get a new perspective on the board, so perhaps you guys may receive a survey once we get back in person. So this is the way, how you prioritize the park uh, park task force representation. So we'll revisit that for sure.
Very good. Uh, any other comments tonight? Being none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn? Support? Motion by Court Schofield to adjourn, second by trustee Germain. Any other discussions? Being none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Ryan and Kerry's. Bob, we will not have another meeting until uh, March, correct?
That is correct. March 2nd, again, Adam Carroll will be presenting the fire fund. We'll be going over the merit pool for staff. And then uh, March 16th, we will have the official, well, projected to have the official adoption of the budget. Homework we've been doing, if it's taking longer being virtual, we'll actually go through and adopt the budget.
Very good. Well, thanks everybody for your time this evening. Bob, thanks for a very thorough job. I think you did a. Uh, real clean, organized approach. And again, if any board members have any questions for anybody, uh, reach out. And as we uh, go forward, we'll look forward to Adam Carroll's uh, message here in a couple of weeks. All right, everybody be good, be safe.
Thank you guys. Night.
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 Night.